Today is July 25th, the time is 6:15, and we are about to call the first board meeting for the school year 2024-2025. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10, 2024, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Tapper Pinter Linden, Union County Local Source, and Clerk of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call?
Ms. Carrillo, Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Here.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Present.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Yulies.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Present. Approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the work session held on June 18, 2024, and the regular meeting held on June 20, 2024. I ask for a motion in the second.
Motion for minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Upstain.
Ms. Yulies.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
At this moment, we're going to move on to... Are you good?
Today is July 25th, and at this first meeting of the 2024-2025 school year, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. Because we do not have students or parents here, I see we have a few, this... My, my, I am talking to my board members, my partners who are here for the children, because we believe in putting children first. To my board members, you have proven yourself to be amazing servant leaders because of your commitment to putting students first. For the last three years, I have had the opportunity to work with each of you, and I will tell you that I believe in you, and I'm very, very proud of the hard work all of you are doing. What amazes me the most is the sacrifice that some of you are making. Some of you have children who attend the Linden School District, and as parents and board members, you experience the same parental challenges as other parents. But all of you, and I mean all of you, rise to the occasion. All of you have jobs, but you make sacrifices and you show up. You volunteer your time. You leave babies at home to attend board meetings. You pay babysitters while you volunteer for free. You are true examples of servant leaders. As servant leaders, you understand that it's not about you. It is about putting children first. I want to thank all of you for showing up at board meetings, at school events, at graduations, at prompts, and other curricular activities without complaining. That's servant leadership. As we start the new school year, our goal should be to improve the emotional and mental health of every employee and student. We should continue to empower employees and students to express themselves more freely. We should be nurturing to students and staff and accept everyone. We should want every employee and student to be successful. If we create an environment where everyone feel accepted, everyone wins. To my fellow board members, I see you. To the administrative staff, we see you. To the board attorney, thank you. To students, parents, and the Linden community, this board want to let you know that we see and appreciate you, and thank you for having us here. Now you can continue.
Thank you, Dr. B. That was awesome. Now we're going to move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on a topic, on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes. Anyone online? Now we're, we'll move forward to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and board members. Great to see you for the start of the 24-25 school year. Our report today just captures what's going on in our summer program right now and how we're getting prepared for next year. So in our elementary schools, we are continuing with credit recovery and also STEM programs for students, our multilingual language learners. They're in programming. On our middle school level, again, we have credit recovery and the Bridge Program, as well as STEM programs through there, through our science department. At the high school, it mirrors the same. And I've been around the district and seeing the students at work, but more importantly, the dedicated teachers who are there and ensuring that the students are not in a space where there's a summer slide, but more importantly, to enrich their experiences. Today, I had the pleasure of attending our STEM program at Merck Pharmaceutical Company in Raway. We have 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students who are in their STEM program where they've been working on different science and math projects since July 15. It's a 10-day program. Today, they had to go compete against other middle school students from Raway School District. The partnership between Linden and Raway Public Schools that was created by Merck Pharmaceutical Company is to be highly celebrated. Being on the grounds of Merck and seeing their innovations, but more importantly, seeing our students interact with scientists and to be exposed to a whole new world. The last part of this is that the challenges of having to compete, not only with those from Raway, but also themselves and what they're thinking and believing that they can achieve. And I will say that they were extremely excited. I didn't get the results yet of the winner of the competition, but I will say that I am thankful that we do have these opportunities for students. I'd like to acknowledge, we have one senior student, Abigail Armstead. I shared last month that she was recognized in an Elks, the Elks, Miss New Jersey, Elks Beauty Pageant. And it is a pleasure that I am seeing that, Abigail, we all were aware that she has now made it to Nationals, and she's going to, yes. Which will be held next month in Florida. So we have our district publicist who did, interviewed Abigail, and I had a chance to speak with her the other day. And she said a few things that are key pieces that I believe our youth need to continue to believe. And it starts with that. She didn't believe that she could, but then she said, "Well, I can. Why not?" And while she does have some fears, she's learned areas such as being able to sit up straight and keep a smile on while she's communicating with others, because she is being observed with how she stands, she looks, and even smiles at all times is becoming part of who she is. So she's acknowledged her passion and her purpose, and we at Linden Public Schools, we celebrate, and we are going to continue to honor and support her on this journey, because we believe, Nationals or not, she is a star, and she deserves true recognition. So congratulations, Abigail Armstead. Another summer program I'd like to speak to is a nonprofit organization called Torch Leadership Academy. We had received the packet a couple of months ago for students to apply to a free four-day leadership program at Stockton University where they would stay overnight and they would tackle leadership principles together with a group of about 100 students. We had five students accepted into the program. I only got the chance to talk to one of our students, and I am so excited to say that she is the daughter of our board member, Mr. De La Cruz. Kaylani De La Cruz was one of the recipients who went to our Torch... The Torch Leadership Academy. And during that time, the students were exposed to visionary leadership, ethical leadership, inclusion, and more importantly, to make a positive contribution to society. And so our publicist is going to be reaching out to the families to do a story on the students as well, because some responses I heard, the students were not able to communicate with their parents during the four days. They were not able to utilize really a cell phone, because they were involved in activities from 7:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. And they had to work on wellness, instruction, peace, personality, all facets of leadership. So we are thankful that we had, Kaylani was there, Alexandra Torres was invited, Athos Lima was invited, and Xavier Diana. So we're proud of all of our students for completing a rigorous application, and we look forward to their stories. And job well done, Linden Public Schools. And that's our, my superintendent's report.
Oh, Mrs. Perkins.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I forgot.
Last week, you remember, last week, we had, what was it? The Linden Police Department Academy Awards? Lamari, could you talk a little bit about that? The Linden Police Department Academy?
Oh, yes.
The Junior Police Academy, the youth group. Yes, they, um, they completed, the students completed, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, they completed a week training of bomb squad, K-9 trainings, just overall, just the procedures at the police department. They showed them how the tactics and what they learned, and they graduated last week on Friday at the LMPC on John Street. It was there, and it was nice. The students really enjoyed it, and...
I was really, I had an opportunity to be there, and I thought it was amazing. And a lot of parents don't even know the opportunities that opened the door that that opportunity opened to these students, because for example, if these students continued on that path, they could get, well, the Student Explorer. Their next step is to become Student Explorer. If you choose to become a Student Explorer, you could now become a State Trooper. You could become an FBI agent. You could become a police officer, because that's the pathway. That's the path. When you start with this junior, what is it called? Linden Police Department. Once you start on that path, you open up all these different opportunities. So I hope we track these students properly. It is my hope, Mrs. Perkins, that we track these students properly so that we could get them into the Explorer program so that they're on the way to, if they choose to have a career in law enforcement, all right? This is a good, this is a good start.
My last thing, I forgot. I apologize. We have one retirement, and that is Ms. Kathleen Burke. She started her career as a teacher in 1991. She taught 4th grade, 5th grade, English as a second language for the last 33 years at Schools Number 6 and 8 until her retirement in October. So we'd like to thank Ms. Burke for her time and dedication to our students and families of the Linden Public Schools. On behalf of all educators out there, I'd like to just say, job well done for the commitment to serve our students. Have a wonderful time of peace, joy, and blessings, Ms. Burke, in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. At this time, we're going to move on to the attorney's report.
Thank you. I have one item on the report today. We discussed for a couple of weeks now, if not months. We were in negotiations with the LEA on an agreement that would allow us to both proceed going forward for this next school year with outside security options and also get rid of any disagreements that might have existed regarding our decision to bring in outside security for the second half of this past school year in exchange for compensating some LEA staff members who provide additional services to the borough. So I think we've discussed this for quite some time. If anyone has any questions, I can answer them inside when we go into closed session. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve item one on the attorney report.
Respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Who was the first?
She did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Yulies.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to the education report.
Okay, good evening. Before I go on to the education report, Ms. Annabelle, you mind explaining to me page 11, item 11, page 16, item 13, and 27, item 31? You can explain to the audience for me what it's about. I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So all three of those items are in regards to the Danielson Framework for Teaching. The Danielson Framework for Teaching is the evaluation tool that's utilized for all certificated staff throughout the school district. It's actually a nationally recognized tool that's used in every state. And so we've been utilizing the 2013 version. Danielson came out recently with an updated version, which is more inclusive and identifies more, additional best practices, such as social-emotional learning and culturally responsive practices. And so we are, Danielson, the company itself, is coming in to train our administrators. So that speaks to item number 13 on page 16. They will be training our entire administrative team on August 12. Then, we have to, we had to identify a process to get all of this information to our teachers so that they know what tool they're going to be trained on, what does the new rubric look like. So the skip committee, excuse me, will be essentially like a train-the-trainer model. So they will be coming in, Danielson, again, will be coming in to train our skip committee to do a teacher-leader training. That will be on August 29. In addition to that, they will provide monthly follow-up sessions throughout the school year to check in with the teacher leaders. Are they understanding the framework? Do they have any questions? Are there any challenges that they're encountering? And so that speaks to item number 31 on page 27.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay. The Education Committee, upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent, presents the following motion to Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve item 1 through 36. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulies.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the personnel report.
Before I read the personnel report, I want to table item number nine until the August meeting, please. Do I need to make a motion to do so?
I'm sorry. Would it be possible to do personnel later on? The public hasn't gotten copies of it yet.
Are we going into executive session?
I don't think we need to.
No, we do need, you need to go into executive session.
Not for the personnel?
Oh, no, but, well, not these personnel items.
All right, okay, all right, yes.
Okay, so we'll, okay, so we'll go on to the finance report, but noted, Brianna.
That's on page 36.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the finance report.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items number 1 through 40. I will ask to table 33.
Which one? You said 33?
Yes, it's page 54.
33?
Thanks. Just have a quick question. Why would we table it?
For further investigation about it.
Okay.
We read it?
Okay. You want a motion to?
You want a motion to table it?
Do we need a motion to table it?
Yeah, you would call the motion to table first.
Lamari, just clarify which one you're tabling, because there's two items on 33. So just clarify which one we're tabling.
Isn't it? Would it be 33? Is it the two on 33, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes. The two on 33.
Did you table which one, the top one? Both of them?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the first one. Both? Just table both. Table both?
Yeah.
She's a table both. Okay. Does J-A-M-F have to do anything with our web services?
No, that is our notification system that we communicate with.
No, not J-A-M-F.
I believe it has to do with our, the software to manage our one-to-one devices.
Yeah, for the, for the Apple.
For our students.
Yes.
We'll table both for now until we have more information.
Can I have a motion for, to table number 33, both items?
Second.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulies.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes. So you still have to...
Moving on to the finance report.
We still have to do the finance.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 40 and table 33, both items.
Second.
One, yeah. So 1 to 32.
1 to 32.
And 34 through 40.
Yeah. Second. Roll call. Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulies.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Berg.
Thank you. Moving on to Buildings, Grounds, and Security Report.
The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I'm looking for a second for items 1 and 2.
Second. I think it's 3, item 3.
Oh, and 3, I'm sorry. Wow.
1, 2, 3.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulies.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas. Do we want to hold off on public comment until the public has the personnel? Do we want to go into close?
I defer that to the board president.
Because there may be items on the agenda that they want to speak about that...
I guess. Ms. Orlean.
Yes.
We would like to hold off comments from the public until we do the personnel report.
Okay.
Okay. So we took call of new and unfinished business, right?
I'm sorry, this part, I apologize. This portion is non-agenda items, correct? We already did the agenda items. Okay. Ignore me. I'm sorry for the interruption.
Okay, so come back.
I apologize. Attorney always getting in the way.
I forgive you. This is summer. Everybody's home.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dani Orlean. I reside at 516 Carnegie Street, Linden, New Jersey. I'm here as a mom. I would like to personally thank Mrs. Perkins, Superintendent Perkins, and everyone in the Linden community for supporting Abigail. Abigail will be representing New Jersey in Jacksonville, Florida. We're so excited. It's been a, an experience of a lifetime. Lots of pressure. She's going to be competing with contestants from all over the country. And that, and I've said that, you know, Mrs. Perkins has been, you know, nothing but very supportive of this journey. It's been, you know, you know, as a mom, as you know, you know, we get nervous because we have to hand her off to the pageant on the 10th, and we won't see her until the night, August 12, the night of the pageant. So it's kind of nerve-wracking, but you know, having the support of the Linden community and the school community, I would like to personally thank Ms. Brady for being such an inspiration to, for Abigail. You know, she was interviewed, and she spoke so highly of you and Mr. Whitmore. We have some of the most amazing educators in our Linden Public School. And whenever I read and I hear people talk negatively about our teachers, it's really, they don't know. They need to take time, you know, to get to know our teachers, and teachers will make magic. You're an example. You know, I'm sure there are many others, especially in my department. Multilingual department, we're the best. But I just wanted to personally thank you for all that you do. And she will be personally working with Abigail with her performance, you know, for, to get her prepared for August 12. So as you can see, she's not, this is her time off. You know, she will be taking on her personal time to work with Abigail, her and Mr. Whitmore, so that she is prepared for August 12. You know, this is, these are the stories that you don't hear about. You don't hear that. But anyway, I also want to thank the board for granting approval to reinstate the World Language Student Exchange Programs at Linden High School. Our students are excited. They can't wait. I mean, I get emails and phone calls all the time. Finally, I can tell them, yes, we can start planning to go to China, France, Spain, Italy. So we're really excited. I want to thank the board for that, and for Mrs. Perkins as well, for her support. And most of you may not realize that this summer, we started our Summer ESL Bilangual STEM Program. So our multilingual learners, they are having an experience of a lifetime in learning about arts, science, technology. So it's really exciting. This is something that we wouldn't be able to do without the support of the board and Mrs. Perkins. And I know I'm, my time is limited, but I want to thank everyone for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My friend Claudia just came back from Kenya.
I did, yeah, fresh off a flight. Where else would I go? Good evening, Claudia Dolan, thirteen oh-nine Thomas Ave, North Brunswick, instructional mathematics coach. I just wanted to take a moment to speak on this experience stipend that was approved in tonight's agenda. The stipend will benefit high school teachers that are teaching six classes as opposed to five during the upcoming school year. The stipend comes after years of advocacy from the members of the Linden Education Association. It opens the doors to ensuring that staff members are compensated appropriately for the work they are doing. This extra class entails more than just teaching. It entails planning, grading, relationship building, and reflecting. While it is hard to put a price on this, it is a step in the right direction. As we move into negotiations, I look forward to seeing how the Linden Education Association and Board of Education can continue to work together towards the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Good evening, Tanya Martin Cooper, two-two-five East Curtis Street, Linden, President of Linden Education Association. I would also like to thank the board for this agreement between the board and the Linden Education Association. As Claudia Dolan has stated, it will benefit both the teachers and the students, and I am glad to be the president while this is going on, and I want to continue to work positively for the best interests of our students. Thank you so much for continuously supporting us. Have a great day.
Welcome.
The personnel agenda is now on the table for the public.
Hi, Donna Hernandez, one-three-three Princeton Road. So I did come back. So graduation was a beautiful day. It was hot, but it was great. At least we were able to have it outside. I know, you know, everyone was trying to find a place in case it rained, so I hope that continues, you know, because with our, you know, graduating classes getting bigger, you know, our gym isn't going to hold everybody. So I hope you continue to, you know, find a place, and also, if that place can be used, if there's another ninety-five degree day, too. Because I'm sure you know that we've had several parents' family pass out because of the heat. So that's something else to look into, having indoor, you know, for the heat. And also, is the, is it student exchange that's coming back, or just going to other countries? The student exchange? Because my, I have to say, my oldest daughter, who graduated two years ago, we took, she took French, and we had a French student come. When she was supposed to go to France, COVID hit, so she wasn't able to do it. But she still keeps in contact with her, so I always ask her all the time how she's doing, you know. So hopefully, one day, you know, we'll catch up again and, you know, and see her. But I want to say, that is, it is a great program. She enjoyed it, I mean, learning different cultures, I mean, we learned a lot. My daughter learned a lot, so, you know, thank you for bringing that back. Thanks.
Good evening.
Ms. Cabera, we didn't vote on personnel yet.
Oh, sorry.
She could speak.
Excuse me?
She can speak. Oh, she was gonna give her. I thought she had a comment about something. I'm gonna go.
Gonna send you back there, Joe.
Craig Haller, one-twenty Donaldson Place. At the Tuesday meeting, I brought up an issue about basement storeroom being converted to an office. And I, I know that the school board, the, the administration is gonna have this all done under construction code and rules and all of that stuff, but is it actually gonna be a safe place for the employee, or employees, to be located in case of an emergency?
We would, we would never put our employees anyplace that, that wasn't a safe location, and that they would not be able to exit in the event of an emergency. Everything, as you said, everything that we do will be up to code and regulation.
Well, it's a law. You can't do nothing that's not the law.
I think that's it, I'm just trying to sign in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? At this time, we're going to move on to new and unfinished business.
Regarding new and unfinished business, we have so many great ideas about activities and events we want to do for the year twenty-twenty, the new school year. Don't you think, Mr., Mr., um, Serapelia, is it possible that we could put all the activities, the extracurricular activities, a calendar of all the activities that we are planning to do for the year twenty-twenty, for the next school year, twenty-twenty, twenty-four, and have people start donating? You know, like, you could say, well, I would love to be part of this event, can we start donating? So that we could start raising money as soon as the school year begins to help support a lot of the different activities that the students would like to be part of. Is it possible for us to do that?
Would, I, it would have to be, I would assume, some sort of fundraising website to, to accept the funds through it. But we could certainly look into that.
What do you guys think of that? Doesn't that make sense? I remember last year, I was out begging for money, and I said, there's gotta be.
Especially for Project Graduation.
Right, Brianna?
Graduation was a, it was a little bit rough, as far as.
Asking for money.
Yeah, asking for money and so forth, but maybe starting early, this way they're prepared.
Yeah, so we can hit them more than one time throughout the year. It doesn't look like we're asking for some money. As well as into looking to other things that we need to do.
Well, like, for example, we have Tiger Stadium. We should be, we should have banners on the Tiger Stadium. We should be able to raise fifteen, twenty thousand dollars from all the different stadiums. We have the marquees. We could be raising money from it for different events. The point is, I heard Ms. Orlean just spoke about China, you know, trips to all these different colleges that our kids should be getting involved in elementary schools. But there's so much stuff that's going on out there that costs money. And we don't have the money to be able to facilitate the stuff that the kids, we would like to see happen to our kids. We have to find ways to raise money from the, from the time school starts. Right?
I would, I would suggest, I have a little contact, that we could possibly have a comedy night. I could get some comedians to come out to the high school auditorium, and we can charge minimal fee. And I believe he would donate that time with some comedians, and they are semi-professional, professional. We could do a comedy night at the high school to raise money.
And they could donate to specific events, or whatever, but we need.
Yeah, he does say, will it be only adults, or would it be with children? So we can possibly do two, maybe, one with children, and then one just adults.
You know, I think, okay, so John, you'd look into that for us, right? Another thing that, you know, I see that we, we have this, all this training for, for teachers and administrators. What type of training we have for secretaries, custodians, hall, hall monitors? What type of training we have for them for the school year? Because, you know, these, like, the hall monitors, what do we have for them?
Both, we can speak to it. I'll start with the hall monitors. Our district's security director is meeting with them to conduct professional development with them. We also implemented the Handle With Care program, that they'll get professional learning with that. Principal Kuntz is a trainer, our assistant, I'm sorry, the director of security is also a trainer in Handle With Care. And that helps bridge the relationship with the hall monitors, because after the training, they will still be there in the building to help reiterate any, any skills. Secretaries, we've been having in-house training led by seasoned secretaries, such as my secretary, Donna, as well as specific areas of secretarial responsibilities, we bring them all in for that training. The Union County Superintendent's Office also offers training for secretaries to attend, as well as the New Jersey Assistant Superintendent Association, they offer professional learning for them. I'm looking into that now, because they have some virtual classes available for that and onsite. For our custodians, it's with the training that they go through between their boiler's license, like, they have to ensure that they have that, and, and then it's just daily on-the-job training. Again, I'm gonna bring it back to our supervisors, who play an active role, roley and jay, with making sure that they're carrying out their responsibilities. And the last group was, did I get?
I think those were the three.
I think that was everything, right?
Okay.
I have a question with the hall monitors, that you're saying that they're going to receive Handle With Care, so they're able to, I guess, I don't know if I'm stating this right, but physically get involved, and if some, they see something going on?
So Handle With Care is a de-escalation program technique that they're trained in to interact with students if their behaviors are erratic or impulsive. So yes, it's, it's multiple names to de-escalation training.
But not physically, just de-escalating?
I'm sorry?
Not, not like, let's say, they physically can't just stop a fight, let's say, for example, if that's.
I, I can't, I didn't go through the training, so I can't tell you about the techniques. But the goal of the de-escalation training is if a student is escalated in a physical manner, that they're trained the appropriate way of how to minimize those behaviors. Of course, it will, it will tie to fights, but exactly what that looks like, I'm not the expert in that. But we, we're looking at trying to videotape these video, I mean, the trainings as well, so there should be an opportunity to, to provide the board with a visual of what that looks like.
Yes, thank you.
The next thing I would like to ask, Mrs. Orlean, you are very, if I may, if I may ask you a question, can I? Mr. Garcia, can I ask a question directly?
You may.
Alright. Ms. Orlean, one of the things that really concerns me is that we know we have a lot of multilingual learners, right? But I am very concerned that we are focused more on children to learn to speak English, and we are not focused enough on our, our English-speaking kids learning, being proficient in a second language before they graduate. This is something, I believe that we, we are in globalization right now, and it will be advantageous for all our students that graduate, should, should be proficient in two languages. What is your plan next year to put something in place that when our young kids graduate from school, every kid is proficient in a second language?
Well, I had an opportunity to meet, it's a very good question, you know, I had an opportunity to meet with Mrs. Perkins, and I spoke to her about, you know, the need to, I shared with her the research, what the research says. And I pointed it out to her that, and she was very supportive, I pointed out to her that, you know, what is the purpose of having a world language program in the middle school, when the research tells us, if we want our students to be proficient, that we need to start at an early age? And I shared with her that one of my goals, as the director of multilingual learners, is to expand our word language program at the elementary, and she was very supportive. And one of the languages that I, that I wanted to focus on was, you know, because we already have a Spanish program at the elementary, and, and I shared with her that I would like to expand the Mandarin program at the elementary. So as a matter of fact, and I believe it's on the agenda tonight, to hire an additional Chinese Mandarin teacher, so that we can have Mandarin-Chinese in school six and school number five. I've also been in contact with Rutgers University. We have a Seal of Bilinguacy program, and what we are doing is partnering with them, you know, so that they can share what, what the research says. As a matter of fact, last year, they came in and they videotaped our students who received a Seal of Bilinguacy. So, yes, we are focusing on our multilingual learners, because the reality is, they are coming in. As a matter of fact, we had, there were over, like, twenty students who registered at the PDRC, and nineteen of them were multilingual learners. So it's not that we are neglecting our English speakers, it's just the reality is our numbers is growing. It's there, and we have to tackle, we have to address the issue, this problem, you know, right now. We don't have a choice. And this is why we are opening up the Multilingual Learning Center. But to answer your question, yes, we are in discussion. I've been discussing with, with Mrs. Perkins, she's been very supportive. And as you could see, on the agenda tonight, we are expanding our Mandarin program at the elementary. So we are, we are a proactive department, so when issues arise, we adjust them right away, we're problem solvers. So we are taking the necessary measures to ensure that our English speakers master a, proficient in the second language. And we have, and the way that we will measure it is through the Seal of Bilinguacy at the high school, when they take the test. So we'll be able to see how many students are multilingual learners, and how many students are English speakers that are attaining the Seal of Bilinguacy. So we are working on, we've been very active, putting a plan in place, and so, I don't know if you have any more questions, but, and then plus tonight, the fact that we are, we, we're bringing back the World Language Exchange Program. So we are working. We are, it's, it, it may not be at the rate that you want, that you may want to see, but we're taking it one step at a time.
Thank you.
I know I always have a lot of crazy ideas, forgive me, okay, but I promise you, this is my last idea. I promise you, promise you. My only last thing that I would like to see is that during the summer, I have, and I'm sure all of you guys have the same thing, where parents come up to you and ask you if they could get summer jobs. Alright, sometimes I have to go in hiding because I can't answer the question. I do not know if we could get a program together where we could get people who own businesses in Linden to start hiring our students, our ten-grade or eleven graders during the summer, so that they could make money during the summer. I do not know if we have a program like that, if we don't have something, I do not know how it could, it's possible, but I also think that is something, Ms. Pino, what do you think?
It's a great idea. We want our kids to have all the opportunities that they need.
We want our kids to have all the opportunities that they need to have and this is the best thing for the, to start. So they can learn, to, to learn first and foremost to save their money, okay, and to know how to count their money and to make sure that no one is cheating them. Because I have heard people say, the kids can't do this. Did you show them how to do it? No. So we put adults in this, in there, in there with them so they can know what they're doing. So I'm, I'm agreeing with you, that's a great idea.
Okay. Yes.
The county, this is nothing new. The county had a partnership with, the Linden School District had a partnership with the schools where they will pay, students will come work in the Linden Public School and then the county would, would pay. Maybe this is something that we might want to look into and to bring, bring it back up, you know, which makes sense. Because I know many of my students who participated in that program. So perhaps we could bring that back.
Okay, thank you. And that's it?
I have something. If, Mr. Garcia, if I'm at a line, tell me I'm at a line, please. I have something that's been bothering me. And I've been on a thread of emails with some withdrawals from the school system. Some kids are being taken out of the school system to be homeschooled. Okay, I know of at least three students right now that are being homeschooled, have been taken out of the school system in Linden. I find it to be disturbing, three kids. It's a low number, but why are we taking students? Why are parents making these decisions to take students out? Okay? We got to find an underlying, there's got to be an underlying problem for the parents to make that decision, because that's a hard decision, me as a parent, to take my kid out of school, to have them homeschooled. I believe you're taking out part of a social life out of that kid, okay? And I know there's been a couple of emails that have been going and I was included in one of the threads, I don't know if any other board member was, okay? I didn't chime in because that's not my spot, but it's disturbing to see that we're taking kids out to be homeschooled. Can we try to figure out something or get answers to some parents? Because I believe some parents aren't getting the right answers they're looking for to find out why and try to bring these kids back to the school system.
Can I ask you a question? I don't understand it, you said, we're taking them out of school?
Not, not us, the parents.
Or the parents are taking them out of school?
I say we as parents. So we have parents taking the kids out of school because they're having problems in the school that is not being addressed and their concerns and their best way of, of it is saying, I'm taking my kid out of the school. Because I, some of them say they don't feel safe. I have a problem with that.
So we could talk about security concerns and?
Well, yeah, but it's something else, well, security concern, that's private, but yes, so that is concern. Three kids out of the school system. There may be more that we don't know about.
That's interesting. It is interesting. Well, I'm sure Mrs. Spoken is going to look into that.
Yes.
I had just one thing quickly. I know we had talked about having the new PR person that we hired do a presentation for us, but is there a way that we can start like maybe a weekly or, or a monthly committee? And it could be virtual and we could meet on Zoom. I don't know who else wants to be a part of that, but I know I would like to. I'm sure Malaysia, given her background, would like to. Anybody else is welcome to join too. But I think that'd be a good way for us to kind of go over like some goal settings and, you know, talk about our strategy. So it's ongoing and not just this one-time meeting that we have at the beginning of the year, so that way we can kind of measure the progress and see what's being done and have, you know, a set of eyes on it as well.
Is that for the public information officer?
Yeah, I want to have a meeting with them monthly, just to kind of touch base. They can go over what their plans are for the month or what their plans are for the following month. And just, we can kind of level set.
But then are you going to spearhead that committee, seeing that you bring up the idea?
That was the intent, I already said that I was, that was the intent.
Yeah, if you bring it up there, you should audit, right?
Yeah, but I think it needs to, it should be led by the, our public relations officer and then I will be the liaison for, for the board. And like I said, whoever else is interested in joining, you're more than happy to attend with me.
We could treat it as another committee meeting.
Yeah.
Add it to our Wednesday agenda.
But I think just because we already have so many meetings on that day, we can make it a virtual one, it doesn't necessarily have to be on that day, because I know we already.
But if you guys want to do that, I would recommend you tap in, you get more involved with the state legislature meetings that you guys supposed to start attending, the Union County meeting that you start attending because we want to be able to not only to expose yourself properly. There's a representative of the board that's supposed to be, you go to the Union County Board Meeting and you were interested in becoming in the state legislature where the board also has representation. So we need to tap into all those different, all those different opportunities that are available to us so that we could do it right.
All right. I was going to bring up, just to piggyback off of what Mrs. Hernandez mentioned about locking in the location for the graduation, if we could add that and look into it, start now because it was probably booked up. I also wanted to just talk to the, the board members about uniforms in the district, thoughts and feelings on that from elementary up to the high school. What are your, do you have any thoughts on that?
I agree on uniforms.
I'm sorry?
I like the uniform idea.
You would like that?
Thanks to uniform idea, yes.
You like the idea?
I, my only commentary is with us implementing something new, again, it just goes back to the follow-up. Like, we implement, we tried uniforms one year, I'm, I think I was in high school when we tried it. And then we, it was something that was supposed to be enforced and then I think like halfway into the school year, we realized there was no repercussions and then we just stopped wearing our uniforms. So I just want us to be a little bit more strategic with some of these things that we're going to start implementing with these students. Because I think it kind of sets a precedent that we're not, we're just doing stuff just to do it. I think if we're going to do it, we need to map out what the game plan is, what the repercussions are, who's going to be responsible for carrying out the repercussions. And then, you know, really be strategic because I don't want the students to keep feeling like we're just trying to add, you know, more rules and restrictions and then add like a couple of months, they're not going to, they're, it's going to, it's going to set a tone that we're not, we're not serious as a board or as a district with some of the things that we're adding. So I'm not against it, just want us to really map it out and be very thorough with how we're going to implement it, if we are going to do it.
I think a very thorough approach would definitely help guide that. Not thinking about it for this school year, but just something to have on the radar. So a, a strategic plan for that would be interesting to see. I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
But I think that if we want to start that, the first way we have to start it because of the fact is a parent is involved, it starts with a parent survey. Because they're the ones who have to determine whether they want the children to wear uniforms or not. So if it's something we want to do, we got to do a parental survey and if they're in it, then we could win it. They have to be in it.
I agree. I want to go back when we did have the uniform, when we implemented, I think it, Ms. Perkins was principal in School Six. How did we, how did it go about that it got approved and then we were strong on it with the uniforms, we were very good? And then out of the blue, one board decided, no more uniforms because their child didn't want the uniforms. So this is why the uniforms went up to the side, okay? So I believe we did implement it and we were good, okay? Then because of the discretion of the board at one point or another, they voted it down and that's where the uniforms went to the wayside, okay? So yes, I agree with Brianna. Yes, I agree with uniforms, okay? But if we're going to talk about it, I would say to start the year 2025, 26, so we have a whole year to plan it out and enforce it. And if it takes a survey, the parents say no, then we're going to have to listen to the parents because they're going to say no.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes, I was an administrator when our district did implement uniforms. And I will say from the role, it, as in from an administrative side, it took almost two years of planning before it could get implemented. Because a survey has to go to all education stakeholders, then we have to evaluate that data to see if there's any additional surveys. Then we have to look at what the cost is associated to ensure that we're, we're able and in the community. So there's a, a big chunk that, a process that we can begin that process because that's new business and you would like, okay?
Thank you, not impossible, so thanks for the insight. I just wanted to get that from you guys. Anything else on that?
I have one thing. As far as like the security measure, you know how I feel about security. Would we be able to add security committee meeting once a month and be able to meet with Keith Aslan, who's the director of the security? This way he can update the board on all security measurements, what's going on? Can we do that? Can we add that on, please, as one of the committees?
Good question. Are we going back to committee meetings in September? So if we are, we could invite on buildings and grounds because that's part of the buildings and grounds.
Once a month? I think that's kind of too much, maybe once every two months or three months?
You know how many things happen in, in one month? And we meet once a month anyways for committee meetings, so I don't understand why this would.
Well, whoever is in charge, who's in charge of?
I am, I agree.
All right, okay, so your baby.
Yep.
I think it's, okay, it's going to be a great idea, securing the security of the kids. And if something is happening, it could be addressed right away. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm with that. I have one more question, I mean, I have a question. Do we have to have meetings in the summertime?
Oh, Lord, yes, we do.
Board meetings?
Do we have to have meetings?
We still have finance, we still have budgets.
Some, some boards don't meet in the month of August, they'll take one, that one month off, but, but you would have to meet in July, just to like pay bills and.
So can we like talk about that? Just to have one meeting in July and that's it and we take August off? No, I'm serious, or do we, can we?
It's a good question.
Because we've been coming, you know, like.
I don't, I don't know if there's anything urgent that John would need to pay in August, but if not, I mean.
Oh, should we get discuss it or?
Probably, you know.
Teachers, teachers. I'm just asking, okay, I just wanted, because you know y'all want to come, y'all don't really want to come here in the hot time, right? Okay.
It's a good question.
So you don't know what you don't ask.
We're running nice and cool in here.
Virtue, oh, oh, virtue? I'm not paying attention.
It's a good question.
No, I just wanted to know, that's it. And one more thing, me and Ms. Annabelle has been getting together with the mental health and we need to get together and take care of it, okay? And I'm going to have one more thing. I met this lady and a gentleman talking about scholarships, Dr. B. And she and the gentleman will come here, I get the information, and they will start with the younger kids as well as the high school to let them know what the options they have and what's going on. And she's willing to help them to get to the next level, wherever they're stuck at, she's going to push them on. So I'm going to bring her in, if you don't mind, for her to talk and to let everybody know about the scholarships. We started now because they need them now, starting from the, the younger age into the high schoolers, so they need to do, so she could teach them how to write and teach them what to do. Is that okay?
I think that's great.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Ms. Lewis, can I be involved as well with the mental health, please?
Of course, absolutely.
So is that it? You're going to go to personnel now? People are waiting anxiously.
I mean, we just wrapped it up, Dr. B, okay? Now we're moving on to the personnel report.
I thought we had to go, we don't have to go to the back? We don't have to go to close?
We, we're doing that after, it's not pertaining to the report.
Okay, all right. I still need to table, I need to table item number nine, so do I need to make a motion to table that?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to table agenda item number nine with the Personnel Committee Report.
Any discussion? Roll call? I second it. Table this one here.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulies?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the, the district's receipt of sufficient state and school aid and, and other revenue funding. I would like to make a motion to approve items one through eight and 10 through 34. I respectfully ask for a second.
Questions? Personnel discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulies?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes, congratulations to all our new hires.
Again, congratulations to all of our new hires, as Madam President stated. At this time, if there's any administrators here who would like to come up to the podium and share a few words on your appointment, you may do so at this time. All right, all right.
Good evening, I am Dr. Esmeralda Cabara, 24 Jaclyn Court, Clifton, New Jersey. I just wanted to say I am very excited and I wanted to thank the Linden Board of Education members, community, Superintendent Perkins and the executive team for recommending me as the principal of School One.
All right.
I am profoundly humbled by the trust you have in me as the leader of this exceptional school. I am committed to upholding the high standards and values that our district represents. I look forward to working closely with you and the staff, students and the community to foster an environment of academic excellence and holistic development at School One. I am excited about leading our staff and students to greatness. So once again, I just want to say thank you and have a great, blessed evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking Superintendent Perkins, Dr. Berghammer, members of the Board of Education and Mr. Firestone for giving me this opportunity to be here today. My name is Barbara Brady and I have been a health and physical education teacher in the Linden Public Schools for the past 26 years. I also created the full-time dance program at Linden High School where I have taught and directed the dance company for the last 25 years. I have loved being in the classroom all this time, but I'm now ready to do more. I am truly grateful to all of you for this opportunity to become the supervisor of health and physical education and medical. I'm excited to work alongside the fantastic administrators in our district and I look forward to guiding my team as they continue to make a difference in the life of a child. Thank you again for this opportunity.
At this time, we're going to call a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive?
Second. Roll call?
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulies?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Motion to end executive and come back to public?
Second. Roll call?
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulies?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
At this time, we're going to go back to the finance report and revoke, Ms. Centron?
Okay, do I have to read it again?
Sure.
Or just, okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to motion to amend and approve item number 33, but just J A M F, which is on page 54, not the app to G. Again, clearly, just the J A, J A M F, motion to amend that, to approve tonight.
All right, so we have a motion to approve a contract for J A M F in the amount of $99,726.95 to provide one-to-one management service.
Correct. May I second, ask for a second? Second.
Do we have to roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulies?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to conclude tonight's meeting. I respectfully ask for a second?
Second.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
No, no, I'm kidding, yes.
What happens if we vote no?
I just wanted to see the faces.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulies?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
In the chair.